So, what I'm gonna do is, on Monday afternoon, we can talk about it. After a while, and then after a minute, um, you and you maybe, if you have a phone, you can do it. Much better than talking to people, but, and you can hear him very carefully. No, I have not. I always get out of the way.
I took a selfie in the car, maybe not.
I burned down my car, too.
He was the right guy. Half the time, he was the right guy.
At the right time, he was the right guy.
He acted as good thing for us.
We had a lot of hope. Um, so, that's the update. But, the schedule, for the week of last week, we, you know. When the schedule comes out, we'll see what they, those, um, maybe does. We don't know till next year. But, I'll be down there, and Bertie will be down there. Yeah, why not?
I don't know.
I'm a civilian now, I got all kinds of time on my hands.
Hey civilian, you ready?
Alright, well, we'll plan around it, we'll plan around it then. Cause now, cause now, I don't have a schedule.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Can I have your attention? Thank you. Thank you very much. It is seven o'clock, we're going to resume in public session. Uh, can I have roll call?
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Garin.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Here.
Mr. Fleck.
Not here. Okay, we have a quorum again. Um, there was, there is no action to be taken out of closed session. So, we will be moving to item four, which is the pledge of allegiance. This is Principal Zayas. Come up and introduce your students.
Big time, guys.
Time for big time.
Good evening, everyone. We have students here from Chesapeake to lead us in the pledge tonight. They're gonna tell you their names. There are, um, students that got their positive office referrals, uh, for the month, the beginning of the school year. So, we had, this year, we had ten, and we had half that came to the first meeting, and here's our second half of them. So, do you wanna say your name?
Andrew.
Give them your grade.
Andrew, second grade.
Tegan, second grade.
Colin, second grade.
Natty, fourth grade.
Gianna, first grade.
Alright, can we do the pledge? Could please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There you go, guys. You can sit here, and here, and here. Wanna sit over here, guys? Who wants to sit with the gavel?
Oh, me, me, me.
I call it.
I want it, I want it.
I'll push you in, okay?
Everybody, take a seat.
I'll vote for you.
Take a seat now.
There you go.
Everybody, sit down.
Nobody interrupting me, I'm typing.
Quick questions. Um, what I'm gonna ask you is, I wanna know what each of you are gonna be for Halloween. So, one at a time, we'll start out over here, to the left, to my left. Go ahead, you're in. So, what are you gonna be?
A chilgo.
Gay. Next.
A lightning ninja.
A halo person.
Hilarious unicorn.
A gangster.
Gangster. Alright, just don't come to my door. Okay, um, okay, then, the next question is, okay, what's your, you're gonna have to give me two things here. You're gonna have to give me your favorite candy, and then, what's your favorite healthy snack? So, go ahead, we're gonna start with you again.
We just pieces.
Okay, I'm in. What's your favorite healthy snack?
Strawberries.
Okay, fine, that. Go ahead.
Chocolate and apples.
Hopefully not together, but go ahead.
Skittles and Starburst and apples.
I didn't think this was gonna be his heart.
Chocolate and bananas.
Twix. Um, and also apples.
Alright, last, last question is, if each of you could tell, tell us what you did for your positive referral?
Supping fun candy.
Yeah, how'd you get your?
Um, standing and crying like, quietly.
Helping a new student without being asked.
That's awesome.
Helping a friend.
Excellent.
When someone was sad, I helped them.
Being respectful and kind by, um, the buses.
Alright, well, we, we appreciate that behavior, that's very good. So, thank you very much for coming, thank you parents for bringing them out tonight, and appreciate it.
Give me all your money. Give me all your money. I command you to sit down.
Sit down, get back, get back. You monsters.
Andrew, look at, Andrew, look at this.
You might wanna sign your name.
There's candy.
No, no.
Yeah, there's candy.
No, there isn't. Pay no mind of the girl. Dr. Rose. Count it, okay? Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Good job, guys. Thank you for coming tonight. Uh, you can make a public comment.
Nobody wants to say.
Yeah, three minutes still.
Talk about the big success here. Nobody ever wants to say.
I know, they never do.
I see. I want you to. Should I take it personally? Should we, what?
And we can move on. Um, item five, public comment. I have three items of persons to make public comment. The first one is gonna be Jeff Barker, please.
A little green, press green, down low.
Gotcha. Check, check. Musician in me. Um, I'm a father of four, about to be a grandfather in February. Um, I've been in the district for twelve years. Uh, I have a son who's actually graduated from Huntley High School, and I have one currently at Heinemann, and one at Conley. The reason I'm here today is, my son came home with a book that was given to him from a teacher at Heinemann, that was completely riddled with vulgar language. This language, if it was made into a movie, would be a rated R movie. Um, just as an example, in the first two chapters of this book, there were over forty vulgarities. Um, eight F, we all know what that word is, twelve SH, and carries on and on and on. Um, there was also references to underage drinking, drinking bourbon, stealing booze, soliciting booze, stealing your parents' car, getting ripped, and going to the high school basketball game. Once I saw this book and the language that was within this book, I contacted the school, spoke to the vice principal, uh, Mrs. Fulton, I believe. Um, the conversation we had was not pleasant, to say the least, because where it was left was, this was accepted by this school district. This book was known, the content was known, the language was known, and it was okayed, because it's normal within society. I have to totally disagree with that. For a thirteen-year-old boy to come home with a book like that is beyond offensive, and I can't think that there's not one person in here that your parents, and my parents who are here as well, would never have stood for something like that, okay? To have that language in there, he can't write a book report with those words, he can't type it on his Chromebook, he can't say it in the halls, but he was given this book. He was also, he went to the teacher and said, "There's a lot of bad language in this book," and she said, "You've already started it, you might as well finish it now." The problem I have with this, after speaking to the vice principal, is said that this was considered normal in today's society, so it should be accepted, because of the theme of the book. The theme of the book is basically the "Hands Up, Don't Shoot" that occurred back in like 2014. That's a whole different topic in and of itself, I'm more or less talking about the language and the content that I find disturbing for a thirteen-year-old boy, or seventh graders or even sixth graders, the book is in the school. So, I proceeded to talk to the principal, face to face, and I was given the same exact story. This is accepted, and I would be okay giving it to my kids. I was just dumbfounded by this, that somebody can sit here and tell me that they're okay with that type, that was the first two chapters. What else is in the rest of this book? I don't know, I didn't read the rest of it, I returned it and gave it back to the teacher, because she requested for me to give it back, so that she could give it to another student, because there's other kids waiting in line to read this book. There was also texting in this book with the abbreviations of F this, and all this type of stuff, and I'm thinking, what are the kids gonna come and get away from this book? They're gonna learn how to say, I mean, they already know the words, okay, I get it, my son's on a hockey team, that's where I'm going tonight, they all know it. But this should not be material that is given to our kids, let alone, it came into my home with an eight-year-old little girl in there, okay? After speaking to the principal, I got ahold of the teacher. The teacher and I had some words that went back and forth, and they were not the most pleasant, and I was accused of being a book banner, because I did not want this book in the school. I said, "This is inappropriate," I said, "There should at least have to be parental permission slips." would never have stood for something like that, okay? To have that language in there, he can't write a book report with those words. He can't type it on his Chromebook, he can't say it in the halls. But he was given this book, he was also, he went to the teacher and said, "There's a lot of bad language in this book." And she said, "You've already started it, you might as well finish it now." The problem I have with this, after speaking to the vice principal, is said that this was considered normal in today's society, so it should be accepted, because of the theme of the book. The theme of the book is basically the hands up, don't shoot, that occurred back in like 2014. That's a whole different topic in and of itself. I'm more or less talking about the language and the content that I find disturbing for a 13-year-old boy, or 7th graders or even 6th graders, the book is in the school. So, I proceeded to talk to the principal, face to face, and I was given the same exact story. This is accepted, and I would be okay giving it to my kids. I was just dumbfounded by this, that somebody can sit here and tell me that they're okay with that type. That was the first two chapters. What else is in the rest of this book? I don't know, I didn't read the rest of it, I returned it and gave it back to the teacher, because she requested for me to give it back, so that she could give it to another student, because there's other kids waiting in line to read this book. There was also texting in this book with the abbreviations of F this and all this type of stuff. And I'm thinking, what are the kids gonna come and get away from this book? They're gonna learn how to say, I mean, they already know the words, okay, I get it. My son's on a hockey team, that's where I'm going tonight, they all know it. But this should not be material that is given to our kids, let alone it came into my home with an eight-year-old little girl in there, okay? After speaking to the principal, I got ahold of the teacher. The teacher and I had some words that went back and forth, and they were not the most pleasant, and I was accused of being a book banner, because I did not want this book in the school. I said, "This is inappropriate." I said, "There should at least have to be a parental permission slip signed for this type of content to be checked out by an underage child." We're still talking about a child, 13-years-old, he's not 17, not going to the movies by himself, he's not a junior or senior in high school.
Mr. Barker, can I, 'cause we, I, I should've stated, we have a three-minute time on it for the public comment, so...
Okay, well, alright, really quick, okay? I also came and I spoke to, uh, Mr. Johnson, William Johnson here, okay? And he communicated to me, we're playing a little phone tag with this. At this point right now, I don't know where you're all gonna take this, okay? Um, he told me that the book is now put in the library in an area that you have to have parental permission slip for, but I find it just so disturbing, because it's such a slippery slope, that a book of this nature would be argued against me. Nobody wanted to say sorry. I even had to ask for an apology, and say, "I can't believe you guys, I'm offended by this." And nobody said, "Oh my gosh." Nobody was offended, nobody was shocked, because they all knew it was here. It blows my mind. Last point, and I apologize. From the same class, the homework that's coming home, okay? Politics aside, everybody's got their own thing. The homework is coming from some leftist websites. It's fine, as long as there's balance, which I don't think there really is balance sometimes in what's being taught in the school by me looking at the homework, I'm sometimes shocked, but... The F-word was also on the homework that came home. Because all they did was copy and paste from a, a website, and it was, it was a quote from some video game kid, and it was F blank, 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 and I said, "You sent this home, it's on the homework." And they said, "It wasn't spelled out all the way." And not to quote her verbatim, the teacher said, "I didn't wanna delete that word for sort of journalistic integrity." I'm like, "Are you kidding me? This is the homework you guys are sending home now with our kids." It's shocking. So anyways, at this point, I will concede, I'm done, thank you for your, my time, you know, to speak, but... I really hope somebody follows this up, because it's shocking to me that the three people at that school, and Mr. Litchfield, is, I was told by one of the people here that I spoke to, he's looking to apologize to me. I think he needs to apologize to me, my wife, and my son. And to be quite honest, I think the literacy department should have to apologize to anybody they sent that homework to, and anybody else who got that book, and what other books might be of that nature. It's wrong. I mean, that is so wrong. You could have Moby Dick, you could have To Kill a Mockingbird, there's so many other good books out there besides anything like that for a kid who's 13. And I hope y'all take that into account, because to be quite honest, all of your parents would've never allowed you guys to have it, just like my parents who are back here would've never allowed me to have it. The school should not be handing that out and then telling me, "We feel it's okay." You're not the parents.
Thank, thank you for coming on, I appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Uh, next is Nancy Connor, and, and I should prophesy, I gotta keep it to three minutes.
Well, as you know, I'm the parent of Jeff, and, uh, my name is Nancy Conan. I'm retired from the Rolling Meadows Fire Department Administration, been a Huntley taxpayer for nine years, and I live on Arlington Drive in Sun City. Um, All-American Boys, the book that my son was referencing. The cover of the book almost looks like a football celebration, because there's a boy with his hands up, but you cannot identify specifically what's going on. So, to me, as a grandma, I thought this was a little bit of a celebration, but I was totally wrong. What a surprise to discover it's a rough, provocative storyline, sprinkled with vulgar language, totally unnecessary, referencing underage drinking as the norm, and theft. So, my grandson chose this book, it was one of four books for a book report. What drew him to this book, I really can't say, but I know it was, definitely wasn't the language, because he doesn't speak that way. Thankfully, his parents are involved in his life and interested in his school assignments. I'm reading the book now. It is a book, as I said, riddled with profanity, it's not even that well-written. It's just a popular concept to present to the public now. A chapter for the black boy, a chapter for the white boy. I'm sure you've read some novels that go back and forth between the characters, and it's set up that way, but it's a pretty popular way to write right now. Um, my question is, why was this allowed to be a homework assignment without parental approval? Did other teachers offer this book to their students, or just this teacher? That's what I'm curious to know, and as a grandma, I cannot find that out, only you can tell me that. I strongly believe that parents should be able to decide if this is truly a work of literature, as I read that this book was. That should be their decision. And it's not a matter of banning books, as was told to my son. It's a matter that at the eighth-grade level, that requires parental input on decisions and discussions with the child about controversial, opinionated books and courses. It involves the parents. So, those are points that are concerning to me, but also, I, I, I'm wondering now, at this point, since this book was given out, and the homework was given out, who leads an unbiased discussion in the classroom? I mean, right away, you're gonna think the teacher, but the teacher handed out this assignment, so it puts me at odds about really what the truth is there.
Okay, 30 seconds to wrap up, please.
Okay. Um, my husband and I have many friends and neighbors in Sun City and Huntley community. They, including me, want to know how this huge mistake happened, how this book was promoted, how this homework was passed out, and how it will be resolved now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, I appreciate it. And then, lastly, Mr. Nick Cohen.
My name is Nicholas Conan, I, uh, I'm the grandfather of the young man who brought this book home from his school to read. Um, I can only say that I'm extremely disappointed that this would be a choice of his. Actually, he had four choices, he picked the book, I don't know why he picked that book, but it, it's very disturbing to me that this would be an option for a 13-year-old child to read. Um, we all are exposed to what is out there at a certain point in our lives. But I always thought that the school district, the teachers, the education system was there to help, to protect our children from those things, and to make sure that it was brought about in a responsible manner and at an appropriate time. Now, if my grandson walked out in the hall using that type of language, would that be tolerated? I don't think so. I hope it wouldn't be. If I use that kinda language here, in front of you people, would that be acceptable? I don't think so. So, why is it acceptable for him, not only acceptable, condone, and actually encouraged to read that type of material at that age level? I find it disgusting, and I really think that there's been a breakdown in what our educators are doing here, and what type of material these kids are reading. I have, as my wife mentioned, uh, my wife and I are very active and involved in our community. And I have a lot of friends that are retired from community service of various types. In the gist of this whole book, I find extremely disturbing. What it's teaching is that police officers don't do their job, they don't protect you. They're out there to beat you, to degrade you, and to jeopardize you. And I find that very disturbing, 'cause I have a lot of friends that have given their lives in public service, in one way or another. I just wanna say that, uh, I hope something's done about this. It's up to you people to do that, I hope you do your job. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you for coming on, appreciate it. Um, very good. Uh, okay, and item six is revision and adoption of the agenda. Um, so, um, Slumber, do you have anything? A brief one, okay, I'm, I'm joking. Then, so it's not brief? Okay, alright. Um, Dr. Slichter is out, um, Mr. Altmeier, you are gonna be part of that sign and dance? Okay, okay, no update. Um, Mr. Zare, do you have anything specific? No. Um, Dr. Budzinski is not here. Doctor Delkastiel, nothing, nothing, nada, alright. Um, okay, I'm trying to hold that. Um, should be no superintendent's report, right? Um, there's no president's report, Mr. Fox is not here, and I don't have anything special. Okay, so, um... 18.3 we'll get to, and then we'll, and then we'll, yes, exactly. Um, exactly. So, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of item eight, item nine, item 10, item 11, item 12, item 14, and item 15. One of the second. Okay, we have a second, um, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Um, so, we will move on to, uh, the items we kept on, so, uh, item, which would be item seven, uh, Ms. Slumber.
Sure, um, it was probably earlier, I think it was probably January, February of this school year, um, we, uh, had gone out to bid for our buses, and Mr. Altmeier, um, had talked about looking at some propane, uh, buses. So, um, today, uh, both Mark, myself, Laura Hooper, and one of the mechanics, uh, went and did a site visit out to 211, uh, this morning to talk to them. Um, they have been now, um, two years, bringing, uh, 15, uh, propane buses on each year. Um, and actually, I'll let Mark talk about, um, one of the grants, that's part of that, uh, that, uh, they were able to receive, but really got some really good feedback from the director, then actually took a trip out to, uh, their shop, um, were able to, to see a lot of the things, and then talked to the mechanics, um, about the challenges, also the pros, the, the things that they went through, um, shifting over to, uh, the propane buses. And I know that it's still, uh, something we're going to continue to look at, um, but some really positive feedback, um, about some of the cost savings there, um, obviously about the environmental factors there, um, with that, and, um, some opportunities for, um, possible financing with some of those things. So, we will be coming back later, but, um, probably will be going out to bid, uh, looking at both types of buses, um, here in the next few months with that. While we were talking to them, we actually, um, happened to find out, they use some of the Tyler technology products.
Yeah.
Um, they use the Tyler Telematics, uh, which is the, um, part that gives you the health of the buses and their fleet. And because this is just the second year that they, um, are embarking on, uh, utilizing that, um, they definitely, the, the shop, the mechanics were all talking about, um, how that feedback has been really great to be able to be proactive on things, to see what that cost savings, because it's only one year in with the first round of 15, uh, they were not able to quantify that. But we do have some calls out there, um, that was a question that the board had, and so, we would like to just investigate that a little bit more, um, and, um, looking at the timeline, bringing that, um, back in November instead of, uh, tonight. But, um, there was some really great feedback and information on, on just the propane and some of the other systems that they're using there, and Mark, I'll let you jump in.
Were, were they just using the Tyler system, just that one system, or, you know how we talked about using the whole thing?
Yes, so, they used, uh, the Tyler Telematics for, um, the fleet management, the information on all the buses, and they rolled out in August of this year, the, um, My Stop, the parent component of that.
So, this was just the first year?
Year with that part of that, and they did the entire, they were gonna roll it out in phases, they did the entire district, and, um, have had some positive feedback on that, so...
Yeah, no, I think the only thing, um, I would add was, you know, last year around this time, when I, when I learned about, uh, propane buses, I, I was excited then, um, and after, uh, visiting 211 today and, and discussing it with their maintenance personnel, as well as the director of transportation, um, I'm more excited now. Um, it's, I think it's a great opportunity, the cost of the bus, um, i- is nominally more expensive, um, than our current, you know, uh, types of buses that we're, we're currently putting on the road, um, on an annual basis, they'll save money in terms of maintenance, just for maintaining, uh, those buses. Um, there's also Energy Opportunity Credits coming out of the federal government in terms of the, um, they call it DERA, and it's the Diesel Emission Reduction Act. Um, and 211, uh, District 211 this past year, for 10 buses, received a $200,000 grant that they were able to use towards the purchase...
Purchase of the bus?
To the purchase of the next 15.
Right.
So, in other words, when they traded in 15 of their diesel buses, that's the Reduction Act, is taking old diesel buses out of your fleet, which is obviously what we have. Um, so, there is a process to go through, it looks like it's, uh, we still have to investigate it a little bit. It does look like it may be somewhat of a lottery-type of, uh, grant, we're not 100% sure on that. Um, but even without the grant, um, it is a cost savings opportunity for the district, and knowing that there is a transportation reimbursement of approximately 55% currently, um, knowing that differential in, in bus cost, which is about $6,000 or $7,000 only, becomes less than half of that, um, it's, uh, it, it'd be a good thing for the fleet, so...
So, is there any difference, uh, based on how the, the distance that the buses run on this? And propane, I mean, I'm used to seeing bu- propane buses in like the national parks on, running on shorter runs, that type of thing, but, you know, we have, we have some distances to cover.
Yeah, so, yes, the director did talk about that, um, and we looked at the mileage, and part of it is, um, on how the driver operates that, and so, um, one of the things they said from the information they were getting from the Tyler Telematics, they were able to have conversations with different people, and not, not that they were driving inappropriately, but just changes in things that they would need to do. Um, Mark, I cannot recall, they, they said at first, they were not, some of their, um, extended trips, maybe for something, um, overnight or, or whatnot, they were not, uh, driving that. They did have a bus that they took out for, um, a paint repair, um, and...
Danville?
It was a way solid distance.
And it made it there and back on one tank? So, it is a very large tank, uh, the general miles per gallon on, on the propane bus is half of what it is for diesel, but the cost of propane is less than half.
Yeah.
Less than half, so, really, at the end of the day, there is fuel cost savings...
Okay, besides the maintenance?
Besides the maintenance, um, especially if you get into a long-term contract, and...
Right, so the fuel savings is on...
You know, you build up your fleet size, right?
When you go roll it over to the next...
Correct.
Yeah.
So, and we'll have all that information, once, you know, we roll this out, we'll have a lot more information, we'll be able to quantify the break even and the ROI, um, and all the good things that a propane fleet will bring ultimately, um, to the community.
But definitely after...
They're quieter, um, they're, you know, the bus driver can actually hear the kids on the bus. Um, which, that was one of the first things that they mentioned, was, the drivers love it, because they can actually hear the kids on the bus behind them.
Okay, good point. Does anybody have any questions about this?
My own ignorance, where would you get, like, propane readily on hand, is that...
Um, yeah, we would have to, we would, we would have to bring, there is an opportunity to wet hose and have a company come out and fuel all those buses on a daily basis, but more than likely, what 211 does is they built a pad, um, on their transportation property, and then they had, uh, oh, what was the name, we've all heard of them, what was the name of the propane company? They come out and they put a, they put a, a tank out back.
And then they, she said they, they have an app from the company gives you, or if you are driving in, at an unfamiliar area, but you're not sure, you know, where the different businesses are...
You can't make it back to fill up.
That, that they have locations where then you would know, uh, where to get, uh, the propane from.
Solar panels on top of the propane tank, too.
Well, that would be the next evolution. Yeah, we, we actually were.
Great, great one.
And then some kind of, yeah, some kind of windmill.
Yeah, and I'm going out, uh, I've got a conference next week where I'm gonna run into a lot of the folks out east who I initially had these conversations with, so, I'm gonna gather up even more information at my conference, uh, next week.
Good, definitely a pass. Anybody else have any questions related to that? Yeah. Excellent, um, so, we'll move on, you didn't have anything more, just go to John, anything, okay? Alright, so then, uh, item 13 is our, uh, community relations and student outreach, we have our FOIA request list, anything?
Any questions on the report, I'd be happy to answer.
No one, no. No questions. All right, um, which, that brings us to item sixteen then, our consent, uh, items. So, um, but, uh, you take roll call on that, please.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Wait, wait a second, do I, do I have to, do I make a motion?
Motion for the consent.
Consent, why do you need to make a motion? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed in the, uh, agenda. Okay, second, to Mrs. Mariana, Marino, excuse me, um, okay, roll call.
Mrs. Meyerino, Mr. Fleck, Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Okay, lies, item seventeen, items removed, there are none, so we'll move to item eighteen. Um, and we have eighteen dot one is the, uh, annual financial report, the audit.
Woo-hoo.
Thank you very much. Um, in front of you, you do have a bound copy of the Evans Marshall and Peace Annual Financial Report as of June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Um, and we do have the partner here from Evans Marshall and Peace to present the audit report. So without further ado, uh, Mr. Chris Collett.
Good evening. I always like to start with the district's financial profile score from ISB because it gives a, uh, really good overall summary of the district's finances as a whole. The highest attainable score is four. This fiscal year, the district received a three point eight, which is a slight decrease from last year of three point nine. This rating, um, continues to reflect the district's strong commitment to financial health. This rating has also steadily improved over the last seven fiscal years. The rating of recognition is the highest rating of financial strength. The score also represents the hard work, um, of the fiscal department, uh, from the board's oversight, uh, to the tone of top with Mark and Debbie, um, who's here tonight also, uh, the score should not go unnoticed. I want to personally thank Mark and Debbie, uh, for their consistent hard work and continuous improvement within the fiscal department. It's always a joy to come to a district that not only knows what they're doing, but they, they really do care. Uh, those are two characteristics that are very hard to find within, uh, school districts in this state, and, um, my firm audits about thirty-five school districts, and literally, uh, this school district is, is, is literally near the top of, um, you know, their accounting, um, and then everything else that they do within the fiscal department. So I really, you know, don't want that to go unnoticed, 'cause it, it really makes my job that much easier, uh, when you deal with people that know what they're doing. Uh, unfortunately, um, there are some school districts out there that, that really don't, and it really does make my job that much harder. So, uh, we come in and we get out as efficiently, as efficiently as we can, um, and like I said before, that really does help the audit, um, and then we can focus on other things to, to make the audit report more clear, um, and accurate. From an operating standpoint, the district's operating funds, operating funds increased its fund balance by roughly one point seven million dollars, resulting in an operating fund balance of almost forty million dollars. The district continues to operate with a low cost per student while still delivering relevant and dynamic educational experiences. Currently, the district's operating cost per pupil is almost seventeen percent lower than the state's average. Uh, this strong discipline has created a period of financial stability while allowing the district to support a high-quality educational program and self-fund several facility improvements. Over the past several years, uh, stepped-up investments have been made to maintain the district's school buildings and transition them to be flexible, uh, with up-to-date learning spaces. The district also continues to restructure its debt to save on interest rates, and that obviously allows to save some of the, uh, monies for the taxpayers. Uh, what more can I really say? This district is a true example of fiscal responsibility, um, and at this time, I will take any questions that the board has for me, me, thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, just first quick question, is, is, anything of significance change-wise in the accounting world, um, from a reporting presentation standpoint?
Uh, for this fiscal year, nothing, uh, has changed. I know, uh, in the past couple of years, the pension stuff, um, really changed things and, and has made our, almost audit report, um, so lengthy that, uh, people aren't reading it as much. Um, I've been to a few, um, seminars, um, they're talking about going back to a, um, less description, less descriptive audit report to condense the notes in the future.
Okay, condense, they clip notes, yeah.
But I feel like in my profession, GASBIE's always just changing things, and, you know, we'll shorten it, we'll lengthen it. Our audit opinion now is three pages, it used to be one.
Three page, yeah.
You know, um, I think they're going more towards having a smaller audit opinion going forward, and, um, the last I heard, the audit opinion will be first, um, in the paragraph instead of having it way down. So, um, as of right now, there's no real changes, and next year, there's, there'll be no changes, um, as well. Um, maybe the following year, they're taking a look at, uh, changing the, the way we report operating leases, but, um, we don't really even deal in that, uh, lease, uh, here, so I, it, really, there's really nothing changing right now.
Okay. Double checking on it, horizon, I'm not the audit guy in our firm, so, always on top of that audit.
Yeah.
So, just curious, um, does anybody have any questions?
Just a question on the rating, you said it had slipped from three nine to three point eight?
Right.
What, is there like a quantifiable driver to that specifically?
Yeah, I mean, the AFR, so that score is, is from ISB, and the AFR does have, uh, four categories that, uh, create that score, but, you know, that, you're always kinda gonna fall in that range if you drop a little, uh, or go up, but, um, it, it's kind of a number of things like days cash on hand, fund balance ratio, revenue to expenditure, so to drop point one, it literally means nothing, as long as you're still within that financial recognition category.
It actually is probably cash, 'cause more, because, uh, more cash on hand because of the, uh, capital projects and stuff, using up some of that cash on hand, the fund balances don't decrease, but, but cash is getting used up.
Yeah, we looked at that, but I'm almost in that, you're sort of, um, it's one thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and that would be the only one that would, yeah.
Their short-term longer model is, 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 uh, uh, they're, they're tied to the budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions? Um, I, I don't think we have any more questions of you, I did, might have a comment or two, not necessarily aimed at you. But, uh, I mean, one of the biggest things I see is, and it's highlighted fairly well, um, is just the, uh, decrease in the, uh, new, new construction. I mean, just looking at the senior horizon, you thought things went down, you know, back in oh seven, oh eight, and then you go look there and, you know, it was down, down, okay, then we, you saw it rebound for three, four years at a fairly sta- state level, but last year, that, that is by far the worst I can re- I mean, I think it's worse than I can remember, even back in oh seven or oh eight, just having a little over, you know, six mil- six point six million, I think, of new construction, right?
Correct, a- and I think a lot of that, unfortunately, um, you know, is part of the issue that we're currently dealing with, with one of the counties, is, is, uh, challenging our new construction numbers, because we did have a thirty million dollar project go in on Route forty-seven, um, for which technically should be eight to nine million dollars of new EAV construction-
Right.
And it came in at one million. So we're s- six to seven million down. We feel a new construction just for that one property, um, so, so we're, we're dealing right now with the counties to, uh, hopefully correct that situation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it goes to, you know, we've talked about it, and, and projections, the five-year projection and stuff, and just realizing, now, you don't, if you don't have a lot of new, uh, construction, whether it's commercial or even just new homes, uh, student enrollment, like student enrollment, and, you know, the community's cycling through, it's just gonna, you know, you see this decreased enrollment that's starting to happen, so. Um, so I don't know if anybody else, if anybody else has any questions or comments related to the report at all? Um, yeah, absolutely, I, I echo what you said, I, I know, I guess, you know, not every school district is easiest to work with, and, uh, Debbie and Mark do a fantastic job. No, it's mostly Debbie, so it's okay. Mark. No, Debbie works extremely hard at it, and Mark, you do a great job, and we appreciate it very much. It's, it's, trust me, me and Kevin can go back many a year and be more in this position, so, thank you very much-
Very welcome.
For your time and attention to it. Thank you. So, I would like to make a motion to accept the, uh, fiscal two thousand and nineteen audit and annual, uh, financial report as presented. Second. Second, by Mr. Gentry, can I have roll call?
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes. Motion passes. Move on to eighteen point two, uh, we have supplemental purchase orders and supplemental accounts payable. Anybody have any questions concerning those items? Discussion on them? Not, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept those as presented. Second, Mrs. Melendi, um, roll call, please.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes. Motion passes. Um, eighteen dot three, um, was an item we asked to not put on consent. Uh, Ms. Lombard, you might wanna talk a little bit, I, I talked to Dr. Roe earlier today about this, um, I, I think, you can add to, I guess, what I'm gonna say about it, is, um, they've been, the administration's been looking into this, we asked, you know, all of us to kinda think real hard if we wanna go down this path. Um, we, we think we still do, but, uh, the, the administration wants a little bit more time to be able to follow through. They've, they've been having, uh, unfortunately, you know, we said D three hundred and Barrington both utilize this, but they both outsourced their, their buses, and so they don't have data on the maintenance and how it possibly improved it. Um, so we're talking to who right now that we're trying to get, uh?
Yeah, so there's, um, a school district out in Virginia, um, that has had it for a number of years, um, I've left a few messages, uh, trying to get some information that they'd probably be able to, um, have something a little bit more quantifiable. We were, um, extremely pleased, had no idea we were going to see two eleven, that they had that, um, but still too early, uh, still, all the things that they talked about with the benefits of being able to be proactive, um, there were things that would pop up, um, even, you know, last year and this year of things that, um, maybe would not have until the driver were to say, oh, I hear this little rattling, or this is going on, um, and so definitely know that it's, you know, that really good product and it's going to be beneficial down the line, um, but there was nothing that they could give us quantifiable on that. So we just really wanna make sure, um, that we are doing our due diligence and getting those answers and looking at those things. There's also some, um, tweaks with, Tyler Technology has a few different types of devices for the different areas on that, and really making sure that, you know, we've got, um, exactly how we wanna roll that out, um, in the most cost-effective way, but also the way to give our service not only to our parents and our community, but also, um, looking at the fleet and, and all of those other components. So, um, definitely still wanna continue that, but with that last week, just didn't have enough time to, to really dig deep and to be able to answer that question, so we'd like to bring that back in November.
Okay, is it the, I'm sorry, so the vendors don't wanna share the data on maintenance, or is it just that they haven't had it long enough?
The, well, when, uh, Dr. Bozinski-
The third-party vendors.
Yeah, yeah, so when Dr. Bozinski, um, talked, he was really asking for some of the references to give us those districts with that, um, with the two that they were, that he referred to last week, again, um, the district's not really seeing that savings, so it's something they'd be able to give, but it was to the company, and so how did that, you know, Barrington and District three, three hundred didn't see those things. Um, but we will be pushing a little bit harder with, um, our rep as well, um, to, to make sure that we're seeing some of those that they're seeing as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So when you say the, the outsource arrangement, is, are those districts paying for that enhancement and then not realizing?
So that, that, that we're gonna dig into as well, so, um, because obviously they have a contract, did that change what their cost was before they had those enhancements? Because that might be able to help, kinda offset and see what that difference was as well.
Let's try to visualize, how would you, how would you lay out the cash for it?
Yes.
You aren't even paying for it, and then, uh-
Right, and every outsource is a little bit different, some where they own the buses, but then they outsource other components of that, some, it's their, um, they maintain all the employees, or they maintain the maintenance department, every outsource situation is a little bit different there, and so we really wanted to make sure that we were not comparing apples to oranges to bananas and trying to get, what are some of those districts that are a little bit similar to us?
Please ask a quick question.
I'd be interested to know, some of those other companies, did they just do the first part of it, like, like the, like two fourteen, I'm sorry, that was my school district, two eleven?
Yeah.
Um, did they roll, you know, how they rolled that out first and then the next year? I'd be interested to see if they did it all at one time, and were there challenges with that, or did they just kinda ease into it?
Sure, um, and we could definitely, we, we can ask those of, of, um, the different districts, like two eleven is using, so they did the Tyler Telematics and they had that for the year, and then this school year, um, similar to part of what we were proposing, that we would get that onboard, we'd start being able to get that information district-wide, but we wouldn't turn on the part for the parents until August, but the piece that they weren't doing when we, um, talked about the tablets and doing the pre-check and all of those things, they're not using that middle component, um, in that district, but other ones, um, are. So, yeah, we'll definitely, um, bring back that information. Thank you.
I mean, is anybody since our last meeting, I mean, had formed any kind of different positive or negative opinion towards this stuff and all that?
I just wanna make sure that we're gonna have the return on our investment, and it's a lot of money to spend, and, you know, we're not budgeted for it at this point, so we'd have to bake that in somewhere, so my concern is, are we gonna get the return on that?
The money being-
That's, that's a little concerning for me, that's why I wanna see, maybe, maybe a solution is we do, you know, the Tyler system, the first part of it, see how that goes, and then maybe year two, we roll out the second part, the parent part of it, so I, I do think there is value probably in the, the check for the buses, you know, that kinda tells you, you know, if there's something wrong with the bus, we can save on, uh, you know, maintenance and things like that, but I'm not sure about that second part, is that really something that we need at this point with our enrollment dropping and other concerns?
So Leslie, and we can bring, we'll bring some of those different scenarios back in November, because that parent-community component can happen with that first part that we were talking about, if you, um, recall, there was the, the two buckets, um, and the second was considerably more expensive because it had a lot of the hardware components to that. So you can still do the fleet maintenance, um, information and the parent part with that first, and then the second part with the tablets, um, would be more of those pre-checks, some of those component, um, pieces. It's the actual GPS where the route would show up on the, um, uh, the device for the driver, um, but there, you know, so the, that's the, um, benefit there, but yes, we can, you can do different parts, you can still get that parent-community part with that first, um, and so we can kinda break those, um, pieces out, too.
I think I generally agree with Leslie, I, I think, probably doesn't, in my mind, doesn't have to get to be a fully funded necessarily, but just clarity around if it is a net price out, what is that truly? Like, some of the nuances you just mentioned are intriguing, is, well, exactly what are the parts mix and match that we can do and the options to look at? And I also, you know, kinda more sold on the safety aspect of it, and the investment in not just kinda the convenience, but the sheer risk management, safety element of it is, is valuable, so.
Any others, Doc?
Can, uh, I'd like to add something, I was gonna hold this off till, if, if we were gonna discuss this completely tonight, um, otherwise, it was something I was gonna share at the next committee of the whole meeting. Um, you know, every year, we file the transportation reimbursement claim, and every year, we file that, sometimes there are differences between what the state actually comes through with versus what we file and what we think our reimbursement's gonna be, uh, and that's all dependent upon everybody filing in the state and how much they've allocated towards their budget, so that they could either increase or decrease the transportation reimbursement percentage. The good- The good news here is we budgeted a good, good dollar amount, but actually, the actual dollars that we were just recently approved to receive exceed our budget by approximately ninety-nine thousand dollars. The good news is, we will have another ninety-nine thousand dollars of revenue coming into the transportation fund that currently is not budgeted, and we have those little variances every year, but I thought I would bring that up, because in this situation, when I ask him about how would we fund this, well, a big portion of it would be funded right there. So I did wanna share that with the board. The other piece I would share, for the current year, absolutely for the current year, but moving forward, at least we know we have it on a reimbursement basis, and so the annual maintenance cost of the whole package would be fifty-five to sixty percent covered, and from an ROI standpoint, from a maintenance standpoint, from a cost standpoint, doesn't make sense to move forward. We, you know, we're still investigating that. What we did here today, and I'm not sure if I missed it while I was looking something up, we did have a conversation with the maintenance folks over at two-eleven who are using this, who are very, very bullish on it, meaning it, it has identified several situations where they said, "Yeah, no, you need to pull that bus over, because if you continue to drive that bus, we're gonna have some major catastrophes from a maintenance standpoint," versus just going to pick up the bus and repairing what's looking to be going wrong with, with the bus. So, it has identified several situations where they've probably saved some big-ticket, you know, repair items because of that system. So, that was, that was really good to hear from that team.
So, a question on the maintenance cost, is that a reimbursable category as well?
It is.
So you're, you're sharing the savings as well back to the state?
Right. Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
So, Mark, how much do we usually, do we usually have a fund balance in, in transportation? Like ninety-nine thousand this year? What have we had in the past?
You mean in operating reserve and surplus? We do, and we actually have a very large surplus, or, no, no, I'm talking wrong. We have a very large fund balance in that fund, which if we choose at any one point in time to purchase twenty buses or thirty buses versus the annual ten that we've been doing at about a million dollars, hundred thousand dollars per bus, we can do that. And that's what we have that fund balance there for, is because we know...
There's a nine million dollar, over a nine million dollar fund down.
Yeah, because we know we have, at, at some point, you know, back in the day, we were purchasing thirty buses. We've got, I love this word, tranches. We've got, we've got, we've got certain model years for which we've got twenty-five to thirty buses, and they're gonna be coming down the pipeline for which, in the next few years, we're gonna have to replace.
Right, when we look at the replacement, we may be asking for a few more this year, but then the next couple are gonna be a little bit more than normal.
Because we're gonna need to, we're gonna have to pull that, right, that larger group out.
But my question is, in addition to that, replacing the buses, is there gonna be enough money in the operating funds to supplement this Tyler system every year? You can't count on it.
Oh, come out of transportation, transportation fund costs.
Right, a, and, and we're currently, you know, the more we have this system, the more we will know and learn over time. It's very hard to quantify from a maintenance perspective how much this is gonna save us, that maintenance piece, right? But moving forward, year after year, just as we do the overall operating budget, whether it's in operations and maintenance, or it's in any of our departments, if it's in the buildings, we will have to look internally at that department to say, "How can we save money? Can we reduce and shorten our routes somehow?" Because we do have declining enrollment. Do we need as many buses and drivers that we have today with declining enrollment? We did increase the number of drivers as we were increasing enrollment over the years. So there are opportunities within transportation to save costs. This year, Jessica, Ms. Lombard and I will be doing a thorough kind of scrubbing, if you will, of what opportunities do we have in transportation to save fifty thousand, to save a hundred thousand, to save a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As we talk about all the time, every dollar we save is a dollar that hopefully, right, we can give back to the classroom. Transportation is no different. The only difference is, well, there's a hefty reimbursement coming back, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't look to be as efficient as possible, which is one of the reason why, one of the reasons why we're looking at propane, is to add some efficiency and actually save dollars in the long run. So we will continue to do that. Hopefully, that answers your question.
I have a question. So, and I may have missed this earlier, so I apologize if I did. Does the cost for the initial hardware increase if we switch to propane? Does, is the, is the maintenance on that, or, you know, monitoring those buses more intricate? I, I don't know. Is it any different?
Yeah, so, funny you should ask that, because when we were there and we were talking about propane, I just asked one of those questions kinda aloud, but to myself, of, "Does this impact anything with that?" And they said, and that's when we learned that they do have a lot of the same systems from Tyler Technology, and she said, "Absolutely not." It's giving all that same information, the bus really, we actually saw the bus, bus looks just like every other bus, it's built, you know, pretty much the same way and all of those kinds of things. And so, no, none of, none of that would look different or give different information just because it's propane. But I asked that same question.
Alright, so I get it. Alright, so, technical question here, I mean, because we wanna table this, but I don't know if I have to make a formal motion and have us not approve this right now? Yeah, okay, and I'm, I'm good with that, but everybody's on board with tabling this? Okay, so we will table it and allow the administration more time to research it and bring it back to us in November. Okay. Item eighteen dot four is the Bruin Farms contract extension. So I can't remember why this was not on consent. Yeah, you guys have a change?
There, there was some text errors on the Bruin letter, and I, in addition, I think we had some board member that wanted to abstain.
Yes, that was, that board member, happens not to be here, so he can abstain. Alright, so that's, we had some, had to correct some language in there, and that's fine. So, any discussion on the, this item? Nope, there's not any discussion on the item. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Bruin Farms contract extension. Mr. Garen, we'll give Mr. Garen one of those today, is a second. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino? Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck? Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Motion passes. Item nineteen, public comment. Do we have any additional public comment? We hit our limit today. Okay, no additional public comment. Item twenty, adjournment. Like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight-oh-one. Seconded by Mrs. Melendi. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garen? Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi? Mrs. Meyerino? Mr. Fleck?
Okay, we are adjourned.